That would not take place to 2022?
No, we're seeing a little bit of it. But we still have a check coming. What, there's two parts of that. I know when I start something, it's going to get into some complicated. One part of that has to be given back to the citizens as a local option sales tax. That's seventy-one percent of the money that comes from that. So where it would impact that is that you all may could give more money back as a discount. Now, the good thing about that is if you had an increase from something else, you could offset that. The other part of that twenty-nine percent, the county gets to keep for general purposes. And that's what we're watching. And it's not enough to, uh, to close this yet. But, um, we get those checks quarterly, so we're waiting to see that last check. So hopefully it'll come in, you know, maybe it'll come in a hundred thousand dollars more than we were paying. But then, then we're like, well, you know, we want to, we want to use that to pay people salaries and then next year we're high and dry. You know, it's just, it's a challenge. But, um, when we get back together next time, we should add those in.
This doesn't include the salary that you're supposed to get?
No, and if you want to, I can go ahead and talk about that because y'all are interested in that. Um, I had that in my other report. Everybody knows, and today they re-announced it because good politicians announce things two or three times to get credit two or three times. Not y'all, but the feds. So they announced it today and, uh, the county, Marlboro County is slated to get five point oh eight million dollars from the federal government as part of the American Recovery Plan. Initially, when they put it out, the rules for what you could use that for were very, very general. And, you know, we all have been excited by that. We saw opportunity to use that for recreation projects, put rock on roads, all of that. Well, today, uh, Finance Director Park and I sat through an hour-long presentation from the National Association of Counties who had a lot of say in writing the rules and they, they know it better than us. And I'm just not sure, we don't really know what you can use it for. We know you can use it for COVID stuff, like if you wanted to build a vaccination clinic. That's pretty clear. You can't use it for roads and bridges, which was a surprise. The only way you could is if you can prove we lost revenue, it's a complicated formula. You can, you can use it for water and sewer infrastructure. We don't have any water and sewer infrastructure. And you could, uh, you could use it far like this bank building project. If you wanted to modify, if you wanted to use it for that, I think you could use it for that, which might be a good thing. Then you put that money back in with recreation written next to it. But we're not comfortable today in telling y'all what it can be used for. It is one of the most, it's one of the worst examples of federal bureaucracy that you see. But I, I can't see how we won't have answers in the next two or three weeks because we're not the only ones saying exactly what I just said. Everybody, there was like, you could write questions, it's just frustrating. You know, our hope would be that we would have some latitude to spend that on tourism, recreation kind of thing. They did say tourism. But then it read like, you could only use it like if you were in a business that depended on tourism, we could give you money to make up for that, not that we could spend it to do things to help tourism. So, Mr. Chairman, I think this is part of, you know, another, the next session, I think we'll know more then. But, uh, it's a lot of money. Uh, one other thing that is, it seems to be, uh, you know, have some money in there for broadband so we could do more, help more with that. That's a good thing. I think somebody signed up to talk about that. But, um, it was disappointing. It's like a, it was like we went to an algebra three class. You know, it's like, you know, I remember when you were in school, you know, it's always convoluted stuff. So we're a little let down by that. We, we, it was like Santa Claus Christmas over here. We were going to put, you know, we were going to come to y'all and say, let's put rock on all the roads and let's do this. And I don't know if we can do that. Any other money kind of questions I can try to answer while I'm here? It's, Ms. Park and staff play a big part in all this, as they always do, so I thank them.
We ought to have information we gathered and, uh, we'll see what we have and where we got to try to get to. Still need for, for second reading on ordinance eight eleven. That's where we were at, so we got what we had as a second reading. We have another one next month or third reading.
So move?
Motion is second for ordinance eight eleven, second reading on the vote right hand. Ordinance eight twelve, ordinance to approve the capital approval plan for Marlboro County here to fiscal year 2022 through 2026, fiscal second reading.
It's in your packet and it's just a loose guideline of when we replace what equipment, that sort of thing. It's not, it doesn't bind staff, it's just to, we've done it for years, just kind of give you a guideline on what's wearing out. That'll probably be tweaked a little bit as we see about these ambulances. But we ask, we do ask that y'all approve second reading.
You have a motion?
Nothing much.
You have a motion for a second? Have a motion for a second for eight twelve, all the papers are at hand. Eight fourteen, ordinance to notify and authorize the allocation of certain revenues derived from one of the more economic government projects located in Marlboro County, set up in the joint and industrial business park between Don't and Marlboro County. Other matters later, two second reading.
Mr. Chairman, this is a companion ordinance to action you all took a while back to, uh, to renew an agreement with Domtar as far as taxes, a FLO type agreement. And it included property in, uh, in Tatum. And Tatum had had, uh, their primary source of revenue was through this. So this will establish what they get to be equal to what they used to get, um, which is about ten thousand dollars a year. And that's their entire budget. Very simple, must be nice. The other thing before you vote, just to let you know publicly, that Domtar has been bought by a private company. Uh, this was in the news today and I had a call from out there and was told it was okay to, to tell you all this. A privately held company, I think I'm right, Mr. Odom is privately held, has purchased Domtar, which is a publicly held company. And if you remember, there was some reorganization type things going on at Domtar several months ago and I imagine those were part of this, you know, happening. But the good news is that I was told that, um, there's no, uh, there seem to be only positive communications coming out of headquarters that, uh, things will stay as they are and that the plant here is a valuable plant to them and they have a good solid workforce here and they don't anticipate any changes in the near future. So we'll all pray that that's the case. They do seem to be one industry here that's not having workforce issues and that's the only one that I'm aware of. So, um, this thing that, this agreement that you all passed a while back is important because that showed that you all were serious about helping companies here, uh, continue to be profitable. But we ask that you do second reading on this so that we can, um, just renew the allocation of tax revenue as it was in the prior agreement.
You have a motion? Second, all the papers are at your hand. Uh, ordinance establishing the Marlboro County Library Board, second reading.
All three of these are the ordinances to take the residency requirement out of the districts. You know, Mr. Strowman had proposed that and I think it's a great idea and staff prepared the ordinances for y'all.
Can we vote on all of these together or we have to be separate?
Sounds good, does.
Sounds good. I think it's all the same thing on this, establishing, uh, uh, these boards for second reading. So, uh, the Marlboro County Library Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Planning Commission. All three of these would be, you can make up all the same, uh, thing to just eliminate the residency that we leave in the certification. You have a motion?
Second.
For a second, all the papers are at your hand. All right, shoot down this one. As eight fifteen, eight sixteen, and eight seventeen. New business, resolution oh five two one zero one, resolution authorize the submission of an application by Marlboro County to the Southland Emergency Management Office for fiscal year 2021. Local management, emergency managing the performance grant in operation to accept the form of order.
Mr. Chairman, this is the one that we've been doing for ten or fifteen years. It's basically every year money from the state to help pay for Steve Akers and his operations. So we ask you every year to, uh, to approve it because that's, uh, council policy to always have to ask about grants. So we're asking for y'all to approve that.
I make a motion, we'll set the resolution oh five two one oh one.
You have a motion at a second, all the papers are at your hand. Any enforcement to boards and commissions?
Which board?
The Fire Board.
Fire Board.
Any more? Martha, you have a motion?
Second.
All right, all the papers are at your hand. Any more? Next, we have, uh, reports for the Bridge Board.
Mr. Chairman, Council members, Mr. Muntin, you've got a report in front of you and it covers the first ten months of this fiscal year. Uh, we appear to be on track in terms of revenue and expenses. Uh, our revenues for the period ending April thirtieth, uh, 2021, ten million, seven thousand and ninety dollars. Our expenditures through that, uh, April thirtieth date total ninety-nine million, four hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars, which is about seventy-eight percent of, um, budget year-to-date. So our expenditures are actually, uh, a little lower than you would expect for, for ten months. So anyway, I think we're in good, good shape at this point.
We're all good, we're doing good?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The one thing about the existing year budget is that we've made of a lot of improvements in our ability to track expenses that we didn't have before and, you know, Wes and, and his staff are working hard at that. So if we get down close to the final thing and we need a vehicle and he finds that we have saved a little bit of money, we might could spend that with an amendment out of this year, take it out of next year. I don't think that would be a bad move. So we're, we're, that's part of our pencil sharpening. Um, as far as the administrative report, uh, as we always do, we recognize folks with five or years, five or more years of service. And tonight we have Teresa Burgess with nineteen years, Brian Oxenone with eight, Arthur Hamer with twenty-three years, Sheriff Lemon with fourteen years, Amber Goins with six years, and Sharon Thomas with sixteen years. Um, as we always do, where, uh, staff or the county organizations, uh, doing the lunch at the community kitchen tomorrow. Bob, Ms. Bobby Grooms is in charge of that. There's a blood drive at the, at the Marion Wright Elementary Library Thursday, June eighth, from twelve-thirty to five-thirty. If you're interested in that, if you call them, you'll see the number on there. They can give you more details with that. Administrative report, uh, we did, we did celebrate Public Service Recognition, Recognition Week, May second, eight. And our Human Resources Director, Ms. Darce Sotter, arranged for lunch for all the employees. We did it in shifts, so we took it to different departments and, and I went out, told me not to talk because I talked too much, but I went anyway and, um, because there was a free lunch for me if I went. Um, and we, we had T-shirts made. We're really proud of the people that work for the county organization. We've got a good crew, um, of folks, experienced folks and new folks coming on that are going to fill their spot as people move along. So if you see any county employees, pat them on the back and tell them that they're doing a good job because they are. The community cleanup event is this weekend, is, is, uh, eight, eight till twelve on Sunday. Of course, we always, if folks can't come that time, they could do that really anytime this week or the first of next week. We've already seen some folks doing that. Uh, we would like to know that you're doing it and, and call Ms. Bundy, um, at the county office to, to try to get names on the list. It helps us get a count of who participated. It helps us, uh, make sure we find out where to go pick up orange bags full of trash the next day so they don't become new, new litter. And also gives us a good list to work on as we do future events. So if y'all will do that. And we're trying to encourage people to do the main corridors. If they don't have a neighborhood or, uh, your church or something you're going to do, all that's fine. But if you're looking for somewhere to do, try to do it where people coming through town see it because that's important. Um, recreation project, you know, I know this is a, a big interest. And we have, we're moving forward with advertising for proposals for a consultant to come in and as we talk, study what we have now and what we need for the future. Uh, we've written up the, uh, the advertisement for that. The image committee of the partnerships met and looked at that. They're all on board, so that's not just county, that's the towns and the Lake Authority and the Chamber of Commerce and others. So that's going to go out hopefully the end of this week. It's just quite frankly set to the side while we're finishing the budget or getting this part done. So we're excited about that. There is money in the budget, the current year budget for this project or for a project like this. And we, um, unless there's an objection, we will let the partnership spend that money and, and make that choice and just transfer that over. It's, uh, fifty thousand dollars, we don't expect the project's going to cost fifty thousand dollars, but it'll create a little fund there to use if we need to go the next step or have somebody else study something. So if, if that happens, of course, it'll follow county procurement policy and all that kind of thing. The spec building that, that we're moving forward with, we have advertised for it. We had a lot of folks come back and want an extension because of labor and, and material shortages. Same problem everybody's facing. So we did extend it about thirty days, I guess. And we had a mandatory pre-proposal conference. So if your company is interested in doing it, you had to come to the meeting or Zoom in on the meeting. And that's always a good idea because if you start answering people's questions independently, then you've told one person something and not the other and they're going to want to sue you and that kind of thing. But we had a, a pretty good turnout. We had a fair number of people in person and on Zoom. So we're looking forward to, to seeing that, but a little bit nervous about the price because we have a budget and that budget was before everything shot up. So, um, we'll see where that goes. Uh, fuel shortages, the big thing in the news, um, you know, whether it's, uh, real or we created it. I'm, I'm gonna confess, I filled my car up yesterday afternoon and saw two people about getting in a fight over jumping the line. One of them was me. I didn't jump the line, but, um, but anyway, we, we, no joke, uh, you know, we, we burn a lot of gasoline with EMS and Sheriff's Department, you know, primarily. And we burn gasoline that we're going to have to keep burning. We can't stop responding to calls. So the good thing, uh, well, one thing is that the county for a couple of years now, everybody has a gas card and they can get gas at any service station anywhere, really, state or, or in the county. But that means we're also depending on those gas stations. So just to be safe, we, we kept the tanks at the public works department. So we have, you know, six thousand gallons there and that'll hold us about eighteen or twenty days. Um, we have some, you know, discussions with the people bringing it to us to make sure we can, uh, can get priority if we need more. It seems to be more issue with gasoline than diesel, you know, if you're, if you're watching the news, but we, we're mainly gasoline. So we're going to keep our eye on it. If it gets, if it doesn't resolve itself by the end of the week, we'll come up with a rationing plan and decide how we're going to do it. We've, uh, directed all our folks to, uh, when you get to about three-quarters of a tank and you pass a service station that's open, go ahead and fill it back up. We don't, we don't want to wait, wait and run out of gas. As far as the Carolina Bank Project, we've been working to get cost estimates for that. Also a concern about the cost, uh, you know, with the material and, and labor. We do have a due diligence period that ends on June sixth to make sure that we can do that within our budget. We have met with elected officials and department heads that would go in there and they have agreed on the layout, which is about as, was a chore, but they did. And so we're hopefully moving forward with that. Um, as I told you a minute ago, um, this American Recovery Plan might be something that could replace that money and then that money could be put back in the reserve and, and, you know, council could designate it for recreation or, or whatever that might resolve, uh, an issue that was discussed. And then at, you see at the bottom, I talked about, what I talked about a minute ago, about the American Recovery Plan. Um, we will keep you informed on that as we are told more and we actually can understand what they're telling us. We hope that's going to be money we can use and help the people here. But we'll see, it remains to be seen. I can answer any questions you may have?
The contracts, the contractors that you're looking at, are there any local?
Contractors on.
Any local feedback as, as far as the, uh, like the spec building?
Oh, the spec building?
Yeah.
No, there weren't any local, um, but it was advertised everywhere. Um, and you, you have to have a certain limits and have to be in that kind of thing. But we didn't have anybody, uh, local do that. Florence, you know, regionally local, but, um, of course it was out there, so, you know, they had the opportunity. Thank y'all.
Next, recognition assistance request for council. I think we have about five, this side look. Up first is Dwayne, is it Dwayne Grace? Yeah, so, uh, I'm, I'm only have, uh, the three minutes to, to, uh, decide. If you would come up, state your name, address, and what you're here to talk about, yes?
Uh, my name is Dwayne Grace and I do reside here in Veniceville by way of Charlotte. And I'm here today to, I have some concerns about a new property owner that purchased a piece of property across the street from one of our residences and businesses. Um, I wouldn't be here, I'm not here to back, to badger anyone. Um, but the property owner has another existing property, um, on the corner of Ellison and the bypass. And from what I see is, it's kind of all over the place. I'm not sure where, what direction that property is going. And I wanted to see if there was any guidelines or was there any, uh, someone overseeing that project that she's getting ready to, uh, start? So that's my question. Is there anyone overseeing her? Is there any application that she has to submit?
Where was the location at Ellison?
That, well, she has an existing property at Ellison and the bypass. The new property is at McCray in the bypass. And our property is at the bypass in McKay Circle, which is right across the street from her new property.
Is that in the city of California?
Hold on, we, we're happy to meet with him and get the details.
Yeah, we can, we can make, get your address, we got your address, get your phone number. If it's a, we usually don't respond, but I mean, come in and if it's, if it's something that we oversee with builders or whatever, I mean, they would have to submit, uh, let the builder work. We'll meet with your authorities and talk and we'll get some information.
After the meeting today?
Yeah, after the meeting.
Okay. Hang around just a minute, we'll figure it out.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Up next, this is Marco Bridges?
Yeah.
Yes. Then she says from Froome. All right.
My name is Martha Goodwin Bridges. Because there's another Martha Bridges here. It's okay, no, in, in the city, it's another one. Um, by way of Hamlet. Um, my concern, well, good evening to council and support staff and everybody. My can, my concern is we are raising a granddaughter. That's Kyle over there, and she's going to be entering kindergarten this year. And we're fearful that if they have to go to, um, using the internet, you know, for school. Sand Hills informed us last Thursday that we can't get it in our house, the broadband. Um, satellite is very iffy. Um, if I wanted to work from home, I can't because work from home positions require broadband. Uh, we have neighbors behind us that has about four kids. Um, they have satellite, it's going in and out on the kids all year, you know, while they were home. So that's really, you know, my concern. I'm really, I know I'm throwing a hail mary, I just wanted to go on record, um, after Sand Hills told me that, and I'm from Hamlet. I feel like I moved backwards when I moved to Tatum, you know. Um, did I state my address? I want to follow the rules, two four two Tatum Highway. Um, and I feel like I moved to Mayberry because I'm like, what's going on? You know, nothing's skipping here, you know, and I talked to Ms. Penny at Sand Hills Connections and she said, she checked with the technicians. And they said again, that was like our third time checking in a year, Thursday. And then I get here and hear about a possible second phase that she didn't even mention. You know, but that's my concern. I don't know what you all can do about it, but I wanted to throw it out there just in case you can, you know, help or add something to the pot of that. Because I, we shouldn't be skipped in Tatum. Tatum is not so big and if you got Clayo and McCall, what's going on that you skip? Most of Tatum seems like, like, and we're four houses down from where the line stops. We're in the county. So where the city line stops is like four houses. Ms. Margaret Arnold House is the last house that it, where her residence is the last one that it stops at. So, you know, and then I think it'll help the city progress because more people may move instead of moving out like they have done and dying out. But, you know, moving out, you know, you want people to come in to keep it up, you know, thriving. So, thank you for your time and y'all have a good day.
And I, I think just, I know the, the first phase is getting the main cables through on kind of the main ways. And I hope that the second phase can branch out and we don't know what, it's stimulus money, I mean, there's other money and who it may be, or it could even go a third or something, I don't know, I don't want to speculate. But I mean, I think that's, we, we've been aware of it for years. I mean, talking strategic planning, you know, that we did not have that in place. And so it's councils work hard to try to figure a way to, to get internet to everybody. So that is a goal of the council, so, uh, we do hear you and we will.
Just FYI, my husband told me he didn't get, they didn't get, uh, cable vision until he was, he's forty-seven almost, until he was in like the tenth grade or something. I was, oh, no, what? You know, so that kind of made me fearful that you're just going to be behind here. You know, like you're just, like way behind. But anyway, I was, uh, hopeful when you spoke about what he just talked about with the economic stimulus.
I can talk to that. I can tell you, we'll let something afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, council.
Right, up next, uh, Ms. Marie McCoy.
Hello, please don't mind if I take this off. I can't breathe and talk at the same time like this. Uh, my name is Sean Munson though, and good evening to everybody. Um, I live in Brightsville, uh, over there by the fast track on O Y R Road. And there's a bunch of us that are concerned. Ms. McCoy is over here and there's a gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry. Mohammed? Mohammed. And they, he stays kind of across on the other side of thirty-eight. But, um, we have a, had a fast track move in and it wasn't that big. Uh, but it has gotten bigger to the point now where it is really literally in the back of about everybody's yard that's back there. And we're, Ms. McCoy in particular has had more problems so far, even before it got bigger, where they're constantly coming on their property. And she can put barriers up and they take them down. And I think all of us, most of us have land and property and, and most of us would like to have some respect when we, we pay for all this stuff. You, you sit there and do whatever you want with your property, you pay for it and you want a little bit of respect. And so, um, I'm concerned for myself and some others. I've often been concerned for her. Um, she, her husband passed away, uh, last August and, uh, so she's by herself. Um, I have my daughter stay with me. There were, you know, a bunch of females and it concerns me, uh, because I'm, they drink. And, you know, even though I'm not a drinker, I know how people can be. One, alcohol and different things, substances get in your system. You start letting go and different things start going on. And, uh, the, a lot of these people aren't even from the community. And I, I personally don't care for them. Have fun, I'm, I'm good with that. But we would like a barrier or something. We, I think, all of us think that if they're going to come in with this and make it so huge, it would be very wonderful to have a barrier because she keeps putting a barrier up and they take it down. She's got much more property than the rest of us and she's in the back. People can't see from the road. And so they constantly are going on a property and they'll come, they're so bold, they come right to your door. For her, and I, and she said, um, another guy said that, yeah, they came to her around by his house. And that's threatening. I have grandpa children and I'm like, okay, now, am I supposed to be comfortable that they can go outside and play? You know, you just don't, you just don't know what people are capable of sometimes. And they're up all hours of the night and the noise, I know it's a nuisance, but my most concern is you're coming on my property. You know, that's the main, main thing because I think that's a big, to me, I see it as a threat. You should, you should know that this is a person's property and respect it because you wouldn't want it done yourself. You know, when you go back home, you would not be happy about that, you know? And, um, she's, you know, told, talked to the guy several times and he knows that they're breaking these barriers down. And she has a pond and that draws them to her area. So they just really want to come on over there and mess with her pond. And, you know, she, she, she has said that and she's gotten tired to the point where she's had to, she got a, a weapon, she got herself. she got a weapon, she got herself a revolver and, because they constantly will do this and come on her property. And she fires some warning shots. And she says she's concerned that, she's tried to get answers and this. That's okay.
We do have the sheriff here, so he's heard that, you know, the sheriff's heard that.
Sure, sure, okay, that part, that was.
We do have all the addresses here, I mean, for all the concerns, so we'll pass that on to our administrator and, I'm saying, amongst the sheriffs, he's, he's in attendance here today.
Right, right.
He's heard firsthand of, of the concerns.
Okay, so.
We'll, we'll get some information out, figure it out after the meeting.
Okay. Okay, okay, all right.
I spoke with Ms. McCoy about this issue as well. I think, you know, based on her interpretation, it's a very intimidating background. I think if I asked to buy her land and her property, I don't want to.
That's right, yeah, she did take.
Intimidation background, and I think something needs to be done, at least to address the issue. You might can't stop because it might be property, property, I think, but, you know, as a council and as a concerned citizen, you know, everyone being intimidated off of property because someone wants it or someone wants to build. A very dangerous business, you know, with the dirt bikes and ATVs and all those things. And I think, you know, her concern is valid and if there's something that you can do, you can, not only for her, but for the other residents and.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all for coming also. We'd love to hear from issues in the, in our community, in our county. We'd like for somebody to bring them and, and address them and we hear them. So a lot of times, I don't know if speaks and we're glad that y'all do come and all of you that's brought those issues before. Up next, we have council, Mr. Rose.
Right before the meeting, I took a call from Governor Henry McMaster. And basically what he wanted to let the people of Marlboro County know was that he's always available. If there's anything that he can do to assist the citizens of Marlboro County, always feel free to call on him. It was kind of a surprise call and I was, I was running just a few minutes late. It's always good to hear, you know, from the governor and, like I said, he has stated before many times that he likes helping rural counties and he wants to help Marlboro County with anything that we need that could help the citizens. The prize scouting, I talked with the governor's office yesterday and they sent me a website, an email address and also the toll-free number that citizens can call if they feel like they've been a victim of car scouting with the situation we have with the guests right now. Hopefully this thing is going to blow over here in the next several days or weeks and stuff. And today, the Attorney General's Office, Alan Wilson, they launched a group of people. They're going to be monitoring the situation too because really, particularly, it all comes back through the Attorney General's Office. It is a misdemeanor, $1,000 fine, 30 days in jail for people to take advantage of a situation like we've got right now. And so anyway, Attorney General and them, they are monitoring it. But if you hear of anything, I posted up on Facebook, phone numbers, websites, or just feel free to call me and I'll make sure the right people get the information. The open carry legislation, which would more or less work with the sheriff's office, it's on the verge of being passed in South Carolina. Open carry, if you own a concealed weapon permit, have gone through the training, have been fingerprinted and gone through a background check, you may carry your weapon either open or concealed. And probably within tonight or early tomorrow, it will pass the House and be sent to Governor Henry McMaster's office to be signed into law. Forty, will become the 46th state of 50 states that have open carry. So it's, it's just something that a lot of states have. I talked with the sheriff over in Scotland County and they've never really seen much of a problem with it. But it is a concern, I'm sure, that the sheriff and they'll have. But it will become law, looks like probably, definitely before the end of the week. Couple of things on it. There was a fee of $50 to sled and that has been suspended. Anyone that illegally owns a gun can purchase a concealed weapon permit. All you'll have to do is pay the person that teaches the training. And it's just something that's coming and I just want to make everybody aware of that.
On our broadband, you can carry your weapon in the middle of the night. Just want to thank councilmen for, you know, continuing prayers for the county. Seen some improvement with our COVID processes. But the worst thing to me is the young generation about being vaccinated. That's very, very important. We work hard as a council and as a government body with other entities to make sure we have access to the vaccine. Please, 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 ma'am, sir, you know, talk to whomever you can in our young generation about getting the vaccine. This is important for us to resume some semblance of normalcy. But my, you know, concern is that we will get back to a situation, especially in our, we kind of do that outbreak at the school, we had outbreaks and several other little pods, and we're trying to get back to a sense of normalcy without taking a proper procedure. So please, ma'am, please, sir, be concerned about your, with your neighbors and be concerned about your communities and encourage them to get the vaccination process. If they have concerns, tell them, speak to the general practitioner, the physician. Get accurate information about the vaccine because it's very, very important for our kids who return to school, for our visitors to open up their foot. So we can begin to continue to move Marlboro County forward. It's going to be really difficult, we already fought a lot. And if we're not doing our due diligence with that, we're going to continue to be further behind. We can get all the amount of money we can coming to this town, but if we're not helping and we're not doing our best, necessary, we're just going to be behind. Thank you so much for coming to the meeting and bringing some of her residents to the world. That's what it's going to take, you know? We can do all we can, but it's going to take our citizens getting involved and coming to the meetings and forcing their concerns and giving us your ideas and suggestions. We don't know it all and we need your ears and your eyes and, and, and your efforts and making sure that we can hear what you're saying and respond to you in person, in light of your presence here. That's all I can say. I hope everybody continues to remain safe and vigilant and take care of yourself. One more thing, summer is fast approaching and I get, I'm getting a lot of calls about the recreational basketball. I think that's something that, you know, I talked briefly with, on Councilwood, and I think that process needs to be strengthened a little more because, you know, won't happen what happened with baseball. I think the format that we're running, based on what I'm hearing, is going to, going to have the same thing as baseball. So we can talk about tweaking that format and take it back to just, you know, the areas, you know, and getting with the area coaches who traditionally coached and talking with them about getting their players and doing that. Because if we have this countywide thing right now, I think we're going to fail. And also with the fees that that's involved with the playing. I think that those fees will be waived for this year. We're trying to get kids to act in and engage. I think we better, we better have working free stuff. And so I think that would be enticing, get our kids back and get our coaches ready to work with our kids. I think that might be a certain conversation we need to have. But I think if we go with the format that we have now, we're not going to have a solution.
Sure.
Ms. Rose, thank you for all you do, cap. The form is, we're doing a great deal, I know it's hard work. On that recreation part there, I've had a lot of calls for female, some type of program because our little girls, you know, nothing that we got from baseball programs for women. We don't have anything from little girls or dads that cheerleaders, or anything, any program set up now. And I want, I'd like for us to look into that when we start back up. The other thing that I want to be concerned with is I wish we could put a line item for overtime for the sheriff department in our budget of, I'm very uncomfortable with this Chinese overtime. Hopefully we can get that issue behind us and get on the right tracks of our officers to keep and attract good people. We've got to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson and Mr. Storm, I covered the areas that I was going to speak on and I agree with both of you for the thing that you said. We're still growing and we'll get there, but we've got to work together to get there.
You got a scripture?
About the nine, but I'll get one the next time.
Oh, I tell you, that's kind of hard to follow along. I got, I got to do Willie Gladden today. I do, listen, seven, 12, I got about 15 minutes. The, several things, first and foremost, I would like to thank everyone who had contacted me and my family. I'd like to give a real special thank to EMS. For those who may not know, my brother, older brother suffered a stroke last, well, on Tuesday, about 10 days ago, two Tuesdays ago. It was a terrifying experience that when you walk up, you see a family member unconscious. Didn't know whether he was here with us, I mean, 8:30 he was, we talking to him, 8:35 he unconscious. That was a very tough time, but EMS did arrive. And we all been here, maybe, maybe not, but to us, time moves so fast and EMS is so slow. You know, in our minds, but we know they are professionals. They did their job, they got him to the hospital and as of, and today is his birthday. He turned 61 today and he's still here. First and foremost, that's, that's a blessing there. He is responding, he's talking, moving a little bit. So I thank EMS for, for being there and, you know, just saving their life, basically. That's, you know, that's all to it, you know? You know, God grace and mercy, a lot, a lot of that happened. I have talked to Ms. McCoy, I talked to Ms. Margaret, Ms. Martha Goodwin, and talked to Brother Grace. We cannot continue in Ms. McCoy and, and fast track, that's bullying. You know, we can't, you know, and I know the sheriff, I know your handful, ain't going to continue to be full, but that's the job you took, that's the job we're letting you for. And if I had to pick a man to do that job, I'm looking at him. To talk to the, that, that community, to try to, even talk to the owner. Look, he, he can do better. He might not want to do better, but you know, you, you, you strong arm of the law, you know, you can, force your, not force your will, but talk to him and see if there's a compromise. Ms. Goodwin and her husband, I talked to them several times. And like Dr. Johnson said, we could get permission to carry a gun. And, and the carry, and the carry act is doing a lot. But like I said, we are behind the eight ball. And we hope and pray that our kids, we might not, you know, we want to see in our lifetime. You know, the old saying, maybe not in my lifetime, but why not in my lifetime? You know, I got grandkids and we all have, have children come in from out of town. The first thing they want, what's the password? What in their password? And when you say, I ain't got it, oh my goodness, that, that, after dinner, they gone. And, but we forced to hope and pray that, who decide? I, I get the question that me and Rodney talked about. Who decide who gets in the, in the area, who don't? You know, and that's a question I can't answer. Hopefully Phase Two and Phase Three would, would be in full effect and by next school term, August, that, you know, everybody in the area will have internet broadband, where, you know, what we got to have. You know, Brother Grace, he come in and out and, and, you know, he's born and raised here, so we thank you for your coming and have your input. But like Dr. Johnson said and, and everybody else, y'all are our eyes and ears. We only, we only got one vote, but when we get as a unit like we are and we band together and we can do what y'all let us to do. See, and find answers for questions that we can, we don't know. You know, we can't let, we cannot continue to allow to pass the book and say, okay, we can do this, we can do that. The, like I said, with the, I'm trying to remember about the, the, one little touch on, on the recreation also. One of the, there's always good times to change and sometimes it's good to stay consistent. One of the things that we do know, and I know, I know my citizen in Clio, that's one of the coaches there, a parent going to feel comfortable with a coach that they know. A parent is not going to allow their child to go play with Johnny Junior from the Sand Hill or Johnny, you know, Barbara Ann from Dunnehoe and they don't know nothing about him to coach my child or to be around my child until they find out a history. We are, you know, like I say, once we get this, our new recreational format, then we can grab and move into that. But that just mine, two cents and I got two of them. So like I said, that's, sometimes if we, if we stay basic, stay consistent, get a, get our kid, our kid got to get out of the house. They get, I mean, we, we got to do something with them. Because if not, they go, oh, they will have handguns and they can be legal. They'll be legal, they'll be somebody house watching TV when you come home. Oops, you come home early. Well, you need to get in that corner. You know, we don't want, we want that to happen, we really don't. And then we talking about, well, I didn't know. We, we know. If we don't do anything, we're going to lose so many kids to the streets. And they be, they're at an impressive age now from, what, 10 to 14? They, they just grown we are and we 50 plus. The chairman, my time is up. I thought you hit the gavel on me.
Yeah, we really, we, we do want to hear, like I said, we have, we, we know as a council, we've been behind for a long time, for a lot of years, you know, we didn't, didn't have anything to, to work with. And so, but I mean, it's council government, it's strategic plan and, you know, and I know we always look at, why didn't we do it sooner? I mean, we, we, you know, and we can always ask that question, but you know, we, we did get a start on a, we could've been sitting here if, if we didn't have a plan in place and wanted to do this, you know, with our, with our staff working hard to put it in, we could, we could be back and say, we don't even have a basic internet service movement. And so I think it's, you know, the commitment, what we do have, I'm just build on it. You know, you can always build on it when we have something, you know? There's always issues and like I said, I'm glad Mr. Grace did come, like I said, and come to talk. And like I said, we'll get, get more information and we do want to share as much information with the people as possible. I mean, that's, that is, that is our goal. And thank you for the ladies coming, you know, and the gentlemen for concern about the dirt bikes and, and that issue. And we, we do want to, we'll, we'll get that information to everybody. So we do want to thank you. And like I said, we thank you everybody for coming. A long, long evening, but we do thank you for coming. If nobody has anything else, call to me to turn.